Welcome, everyone. We're so excited you have joined us today for our fourth candidate forum for Alameda County Board of Supervisors District Five. My name is Andy Martinez Patterson. I'm the CEO of Alameda Health Consortium, and I will be your moderator today. I'm so pleased that the top two candidates for District Five, Nikki Fortunato-Bass and John Bauders, are both here for this important discussion with our health center staff and other members of our community. Let me quickly walk through today's agenda. Well, I'll first go through welcoming introductions. We'll start at around 11:10 moderated questions for our candidates. At 11:40, we'll move into audience Q and A. 11:50, we'll do closing statements, and we'll be done by 12:00 P. M. I'd like, before we get started and moving into the introductions, I'd like to share some background about the Alameda Health Consortium and our member health centers. The consortium is a regional association of eight federally qualified health centers with over 105 clinic sites and 21 mobile units collectively serving more than 285,000 patients. Together, we advocate for high-quality healthcare for the medically underserved in the East Bay. We share best practices to sustain, expand, and diversify our community's safety net healthcare workforce, and collaborate as thought partners with policymakers to inform, shape, and implement health policy changes. With our member health centers, we organize civic leadership development groups to provide education and skills for health center staff to engage more closely in advocacy efforts, and in turn engage their patients in advocacy efforts. A little bit more about our community health centers. They were born of the civil rights and social justice movements in the 1960s. Health centers were established as a response to address the growing healthcare disparities of our historically marginalized communities. Health centers grew out of a core belief that access to affordable, accessible, high-quality healthcare provided with respect and dignity to all is essential, and we will provide service to anybody regardless of insurance status, income, or immigration. Together, the eight federally qualified health centers are members of the consortium, and they serve as the backbone of the county's primary care delivery system. We serve about 45% of the Alameda Alliance medical population. By mission and mandate, our health centers are open to anyone who walks through their doors at any stage of their life. Thank you for allowing me to share a little bit more about our amazing centers. We will now move into the moderated forum, the moderated forum portion. I'm so pleased to be here this morning and moderate our nonpartisan candidate forum for Alameda County Board of Supervisors District Five. As a reminder, Alameda Health Consortium and our member health centers are nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations that cannot endorse candidates. As such, no endorsements will come from today's forum. This education forum provides an important opportunity for constituents and community members alike to get to know our two candidates and ask questions about their priorities and their vision for the district and how they hope to implement positive change. Joining us today in asking questions are our health center leadership that have health center clinics locations in District Five. I will be calling on them to ask questions that reflect the pressing issues facing Alameda County and our patient communities. Candidates will have time to introduce themselves and answer your questions. But before we begin, a few ground rules. I want to state that this is a safe space, and while we encourage all questions, it's important to note that disrespect and uncivil remarks and questions will not be tolerated. Any incivility will be stopped by the moderator and may result in exclusion from future forums. While each candidate will have a chance to answer your questions, there will be no time for rebuttals. I want to remind the audience to send questions using the chat box. You can also raise your hand to ask questions during the Q and A section. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond per question and one minute for a closing statement. We will begin by providing the candidates with an opportunity to present a two-minute opening statement. We would like the candidates to start off by telling us about themselves and their inspiration for running for Alameda County Board of Supervisors District Five seat. John, we'll start with you, and we will have two minutes, and then Nikki will follow. Please tell us a little bit about yourself and what motivated you to run for District Five.
Thank you, and thank you so much for convening this opportunity today to the Alameda Health Consortium and its members. My name is John Bauders. I'm a council member in the city of Emeryville and a candidate for supervisor in District Five. My pathway to seeking this office began more than 25 years ago. I came out to a small Christian community and family in the Midwest and was not greeted with love and acceptance and faced mental health challenges as a young person. I've used mental health services since that time and have spent a career working in nonprofit direct services, assisting other people, trying to find pathways to health, healing, and home. In my time working as a nonprofit service provider, that's included a number of things. I began my career working as a homeless services provider. I worked at a federally qualified healthcare center at the Captain James Lovell Naval Base in North Chicago, Illinois, where I served people who were unhoused and trying to access disability and healthcare benefits. My work has transformed to the point where I live today. Here in the East Bay for the last 14 years, I've worked at the Alliance for Safety and Justice, where I do advocacy for community-based wellness and health centers. I wrote the initial legislation for Senator Leno in 2016 and 17 that created Trauma Recovery Center models in California, which have been replicated by over 50 of them in the United States, creating an integrated behavioral health services model to help people experiencing trauma. And in 2017, I worked with Dr. Joaquin Arambula in the Assembly to pass Assembly Bill 340, which created a statewide work group to screen ACEs in children in schools in the Medicaid program, and we established a Z code for actually funding primary care physicians and wellness centers to do EPSDT, to do screenings for children. So I'm grateful to be here today. I've been championing health and housing interventions for over 25 years, and I'm inspired to join the Board of Supervisors to bring those types of outcomes to people who need them in Alameda County. I look forward to your questions.
Right on time. I'm impressed. Really excellent. Thank you, John. Nikki, we'd love to hear from you.
Well, thank you for having me. It's great to be here. My name is Nikki Fortunato-Bass. I've lived in Oakland and Alameda County for 27 years. I'm a working mom, a lifelong organizer, and an effective legislator that collaborates with our community. I currently serve as the president of the Oakland City Council, and I'm running for supervisor because I believe in building a county where everyone has an opportunity to thrive with accessible healthcare, affordable housing, and community safety. I'm the daughter of Filipino immigrants who came to this country as healthcare workers looking for a better life, and it's my parents who instilled in me the values of hard work, determination, and the importance of giving back. And having grown up in a household understanding the healthcare field, I really understand the personal sacrifices that physicians and nurses make in order to provide the best care to their patients. Over my tenure as an organizer for a couple decades, I had the privilege of leading an organization called the East Bay Alliance for a Sustainable Economy and participated in the East Oakland Building Healthy Communities Collaborative over 10 years with the county public health department. It was there that I became very immersed in recognizing the social determinants of health, where your zip code and your income can determine how long you will live and the likelihood that you will get a chronic disease. And during that time, I led the effort to raise Oakland's minimum wage with paid sick days. I also really believe in collaborative governance. I'm working to represent on the Alameda County Board of Supervisors because I need, I believe we need a strong champion for Oakland and our cities in North County that will partner deeply with the community. And I would look to your leadership and partnership in my understanding of the issues and my decision-making. In terms of my work with community healthcare, community health clinics, I saw firsthand during COVID the critical role that all of you play as trusted messengers and partners in our community around COVID. There was incredible work that we did together around testing and vaccination to reach our most vulnerable communities that with... I'm sorry, is that time?
Yeah. Do you want to say one more sentence? Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you to both. Before turning to our health center leadership, I'd like to set the stage for our attendees with the following question. Unlike other counties in the state that operate community clinics to meet state requirements to provide healthcare to low-income and under-invested populations, Alameda County contracts with Alameda Health System and federally qualified health clinics to deliver care. Together, they constitute the backbone of the county's safety net healthcare delivery system. How would you ensure the sustainability of this system so that community health providers can continue to provide equitable access to care? And what role would you play in advocating for the necessary resources? Nikki, we'll start with you, and then John, two minutes.
Thank you so much. So again, I just want to touch base on my experience working with community healthcare clinics. You all do amazing work to ensure access to healthcare for our most vulnerable. That includes trust, outreach, relationship building, language access, cultural competency. And again, COVID was a great example of that. You know, I think it's really important to recognize, not only are you a critical part of the healthcare ecosystem, we also have to make sure that you all are fully funded. CHCs receive about half of health PAC funds of about $60 million. And at the same time, we know that the state has been shortchanging on rates, and that's why it's critically important to make sure that your future supervisor works with our health department to ensure those health PAC contracts are robust. In addition to that, I think we are all very concerned about how Prop One is shifting critical mental health funding towards housing, and we have to be very strategic in what that infrastructure of funding looks like. So I, given the role that I have played in the community, I would make sure that we have a collaborative and transparent process, and I would work to convene you all as the consortium, together with the board and our state and federal partners, to ensure that we are incredibly creative in how we find budget solutions. I also support Prop 35. I think it's important to make sure we extend that tax on managed care to make sure that we have the secure, ongoing funding. And, you know, I'll underscore just again that it's important to make sure that the CHC network is robust because those preventative services, early interventions are really critical to keep people out of crisis and to make sure that we have the care coordination that we need.
Thank you, Nikki. John?
Thank you. So professionally, for over the last 10 years, I've worked as a legislative advocate in Sacramento. I'm endorsed in this race by a number of people who've been the current and former executive directors of places like CWDA and CBHDA. I've worked with CHIAC and CSAC over the years to help ensure that we have funding for counties to provide this really important service on the healthcare side. I think Alameda County is a leader through the Alameda Health Consortium and the Alliance to providing streamlined care and integrating all the service providers into one network and framework for services. We know that the funding is insufficient, and we know that ever since realignment has happened in several places that the county and the providers that we partner with have had a very fractured approach to receiving fractured recipients of receiving funding that creates gaps in the way we provide services. I think Alameda County has taken some very important steps to remove some of those gaps and barriers by the way they've integrated health service delivery models, but we have a long ways to go, especially in places where there's carve-outs like juvenile specialty mental health care. There's opportunities for us, I think, to leverage additional funding. So I think the county, in terms of how do you provide and protect the stability of funding in Alameda County, I think the CALIM program is an opportunity that's not been utilized well. It's an opportunity for us to take county resources and leverage that to bring in additional dollars, which could expand and ensure and protect a robust mental health services network for us across the county. I also think that we have to look at opportunities for where there's overlay and opportunities to connect between funding sources like Assembly Bill 109 for people who are in custody, and how do we provide continuous care for them when they depart incarceration or custodial status? So there are funding opportunities there. I've done a lot of work around the Mental Health Services Act funding prior to Prop One as the county was sitting on large reserves, claiming prudent reserves were necessary, but in excess of what was actually prudent and not, you know, providing to the health providers in our county resources they desperately needed to serve people who had acute mental health needs. So I'm interested in working to remove barriers to making that funding more accessible, leveraging new funding, and helping do the work that's needed in Sacramento to ensure this county is well-funded for all health services it provides its constituents.
Thank you, John. The next question will be asked by Robert Phillips, CEO of Baywell Health. And on this question, John, we'll start off with you, and then Nikki.
Thanks, Andy, and thank you, John, and Nikki for making time for us. So we've mentioned social determinants of health, and as you all both know and then mentioned, you know, access to a number of factors are important to shaping, you know, the county's residents' health and opportunities, and specifically, access to good transportation, quality education, and economic stability, in particular, really important to residents' health and opportunities. How would you prioritize and target investments in these areas to boost Alameda County residents' quality of life, but also ensure fair access to opportunities for everybody in the county?
Thank you for the question, Robert. So on transportation, health disparities, economic opportunity, and educational outcomes, I'm somebody who believes in whole-person care, and so my leadership in Emeryville, I think, best exemplifies what I would do at the county. Several examples of that, I ran Measure F in 2020. It was a quarter cent sales tax leverage, which subsidizes early childhood education. We're one of three cities in California that provide early child education as a city service, subsidize that to our families and workforce. I think that's part of meeting the front-end and root cause issues of addressing inequities and inequalities throughout other systems in the county and the state. On transportation, we run a free transportation service, the Emery Ground. We leverage property assessments against all of the large property owners in the city. We use that to subsidize transportation so that people of all ages and abilities have modality choices. We run a program called Eight to Go, which provides free senior and paratransit services to take anyone in Emeryville to any medical center within Alameda County for free. And if you're a person who's over the age of 18 and living with a disability, that fee is $1 for on-demand services, which I think are critical to helping connect people to wellness and helping them, especially seniors, age in place and be independent later in life. And then beyond that, you asked about economic opportunity, and I'm proud that Emeryville has the highest minimum wage in the nation. So we have an annual increase based on CPI that ensures that our working families have economic mobility that matches that of the communities that they live in. We have a predictive scheduling ordinance that only a handful of cities in the United States have that ensure that people can balance health needs, family needs, educational opportunities around a single place of employment and have predictable hours to improve their health outcomes. Lots of studies have shown that their sleep outcomes actually were actually improved by the scheduling ordinance we passed. And then we have paid and sick family leave ordinances that are among the best in the state of California. Those are models that I would bring to Alameda County, and I would wish to replicate because I do believe that whole-person care ensures that we have educational, full-life trajectory, wellness, economic opportunity, transportation, and housing choices. And I appreciate your question.
Thank you, John. Nikki?
Thank you for this question. You know, I believe that through my decades working as an organizer and also working on health equity with building healthy communities, and more recently with Oakland Thrives and 40 by 40, you know, it's really important to make sure that we see ourselves in a continuum of care, that we see ourselves working as a network on the intersection of issues. And so each of these issues, transportation, jobs, as well as housing and healthcare, all have an intersection. And we are going to do much better if we work on prevention and intervention and really making sure that people have the basic rights of good housing, a job, and access to transportation. And so coming from the Oakland City Council to the Board of Supervisors, I would make sure that we're really looking at a regional approach and regional collaboration with multiple stakeholders to address these issues. I think there's a huge opportunity in terms of housing to go beyond the county's Home Together 2026 plan and really have a housing-first approach similar to what Houston has done, bringing multiple stakeholders together, public and private, and really having all hands on deck to align our resources. And with that focus on housing, we can also look at how do we create good jobs, you know, working with each of our cities, the East Bay Economic Development Alliance. I think there's a huge opportunity, obviously, in terms of the healthcare workforce sector together with the state, but also around manufacturing along our corridor. That's also got an overlay with transportation, and I think I'll be able to look at how we bring all of those stakeholders to bear. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next question is from Natalie Aguilera, CEO of Native American Health Center. And Nikki, you'll be up first, and then John. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you, Nikki and John, for meeting with us today. My question is around affordable housing, which was spoken about a little bit, but it is one of the most pressing issues in Alameda County, and it heavily impacts our patients, our staff, and our community. If you haven't spoke or if there's additional items you want to add, what specific policies or strategies would you pursue to increase the affordable housing options and address housing insecurity in the county?
Thank you for that question. So I do think that our Home Together plan is on the right track with the focus on prevention, intervention, and housing. I've been a leader on these issues as an Oakland council member. I would take that leadership to the county to make sure we have, again, a regional approach and a much more aggressive housing-first approach as well. So in terms of prevention, we continue, we need to continue making sure that we are expanding tenant protections. That includes in our unincorporated areas as well as providing resources like tenant legal assistance. On intervention, we have to intervene early. I've been a big proponent of making sure that we are serving seniors as well as transitional age youth. There is a project with OUSD, for example, a TAY hub that would house 100 to 150 transitional age youth with our school district. We have to make sure we're intervening early, especially with our most vulnerable populations. And then in terms of housing, I'm sorry, was that 30 seconds?
Sorry, one minute.
Okay. In terms of housing, I'm really proud to have co-authored Oakland's 315 million Affordable Housing Bond. We're going to be able to put 2,000 affordable units, including permanent supportive housing, you know, out into the market. Half of that is already in the works. And again, I think it's important to make sure we have a regional strategy. So I would work to ensure that we are looking at a regional housing bond. I'm on the board of the Association of Bay Area Governments. We'll continue that. We also need to look at whether the county needs to do another regional bond. And this is also an area where our partnerships across the state and the federal government matter so we can pull down the resources we need, and I'm proud to be endorsed by Jesse Arigine, who's running for state senate, as well as Latifah Simon, who is running for Congress. I think I'll be able to build a really strong regional partnership, including partnership with our state and federal legislators.
Thank you, Nikki. John?
Thank you so much for this question. This is a really personal issue for me. So I'm a formerly unhoused person, and my entree into affordable housing came through the provision of a boarding house unit. So I rented a room at $71 a week about 24 years ago for my first place to stay. And my professional career working with people who are unhoused has largely been focused on housing as a healthcare intervention. So in our city, there's a number of things that we've done that I think we need to do to address the entire spectrum of services that begins with sheltering people. So we've converted a rec center in our city to a temporary homeless shelter where we're housing families from Oakland and Berkeley through our family front door program to ensure people are off the street and can connect to services. It also means putting protections in place. I worked as an eviction defense attorney in Chicago at Cabrini-Green Legal Aid, where I defended people being evicted from public housing for one-strike evictions to protect people from falling into the homelessness system. But we also need to have long-term strategies, and so I ran Measure C in Emeryville in 2018. It was a $50 million Affordable Housing Bond by way of showing the per capita size of that. If Oakland had done that, it would have been a $1.9 billion bond by scale. We used that bond to leverage hundreds of millions in tax credits and other state funding and partner it with existing affordable housing dollars we had and put it into an expenditure plan that comprehensively and strategically is building housing for many different types of people. We have 90 units of permanent supportive housing for the homeless and people of serious mental illness opening next May. We have a transition age youth project that's intergenerational in nature. 80% of the units are for seniors. 20% are for foster youth aging out of care with no families. That will open as soon as the state issues its next round of tax credit calls and the vouchers in the county. But we've also got projects for working families and low-income families, and I think that having a strategic plan that balances the needs of all people of socioeconomic status across the county is culturally competent is important. Lastly, I would just say on the prevention side, in my full-time job, I helped with initiating the budget item in 2014 that created the CalWorks Housing Support Program, which we've used to prevent people who are in our welfare work track from becoming homeless while they're seeking job training and placement in our communities. So I believe in a very broad and holistic approach to both building abundant housing, making it affordable, and providing protections and safeguards to ensure nobody loses housing once they have it.
Thank you, John. Our next question will be from Cecilia Abilas, CEO of Lifelong Medical Care. And John, you will go first, and then Nikki.
Thank you, Andy, for moderating, and John, and Nikki, thank you so much for being on this call with us. My question is around mental health services. The county historically leveraged Mental Health Service Act dollars to provide preventative and early mental health intervention in community settings, such as community health centers, to reduce preventable mental health crises such as suicide, inpatient hospitalization, and individuals experiencing acute mental health episodes being incarcerated. With Prop One's passage in March, Alameda County Preventative and Early Mental Health Delivery System will face a funding cliff in July 2026. How would you sustain the county's community-delivered preventative and early mental health delivery system?
Thank you. I mean, you've nailed it on the head. I think in the question, there's a really significant challenge ahead. A lot of people thought Prop One was adding money to the pot. The pie did not get any bigger. It's repurposing funding for what I would say are also important investments, but clearly going to take away funding from other important investments like subacute beds and critical care need services to help prevent people who will become long-term users of the mental health crisis system and services system from being in that position in the first place. We structurally have to restructure the way Alameda County delivers mental health services. We need a continuum of care that's actually competent. It's going to be culturally accessible, but also have places where people land. You can't send people into John George, expect to medicate them for 72 hours when they need months of therapy and treatment to bring them into care. So we have a very significant crisis on our hands, and I think we have to, again, go back to leveraging funding that we don't currently have. I think that some of that funding could come from CALIM. I think that we need to look at opportunities for how we could use Measure W funding related to homelessness to focus on mental health services for people who are chronically homeless. And I think that we need to have a serious conversation about the breadth of services currently being funded by MHSA money in the county because a lot of them have escaped the purpose of the initial ballot measure, and we're serving people using MHSA money that wasn't initially intended for that. So I do think there's a need to reevaluate our prioritization of funding within the Prop 63 bucket in order to ensure that we're meeting the voter intent, but also fulfilling our mandate as a county to deliver a full continuum of mental health services. So there is a potential that we have to look for additional funding, but I think we need to optimize the funding we have, and we need to reevaluate whether the service structure we have in place is one that actually meets the needs of the people who we're serving today.
Thank you, John. Nikki?
Thank you for the question. I think this is something that is on the minds of so many, and I appreciate the work that Lifelong and others do in this space. You know, just stepping back, I think we also have to acknowledge we're experiencing a mental health crisis with a lack of treatment, intervention, and prevention, and we certainly need to increase the number of treatment beds from crisis care to permanent supportive housing, as well as look at the interconnections, again, between mental health homelessness and incarceration so that we are really leading our policy and budgeting from a public health and a racial equity lens. This is where the county needs to be incredibly creative in solving this problem. And I get, again, I think this is a place where we have to look at how can we have much more transparency and accountability in our budget as well as collaboration? And given the work that I've done, including co-leading the year-long process to reimagine public safety in Oakland and partner with the community as well as the philanthropic community, I think I'm well-positioned to help lead together with you how we look at the structure of our funding as well as the services we provide and, you know, the budgets. In addition to what you've already heard, you know, I agree that Measure W is potentially one place that we can look to. I also believe that the reserves, which the county has, almost a year's worth of reserves, we have to look strategically and, you know, also be fiscally responsible in terms of whether it makes sense to repurpose any of those reserves. And for those folks who've been working on care first, jails last, I think there's a number of initiatives that I want to partner with to look at how we really use our behavioral health dollars in a much more efficient way. And that includes repurposing the $26 million to expand Santa Rita Jail towards behavioral health. So rather than the capital improvements, how can we ensure that we're building out the permanent supportive housing and crisis treatment beds that we really need to serve just as involved individuals, not in our jail system but out in the community? Similarly, reopening the Babu Settlement could help leverage $106 million a year in terms of addressing issues in our jail population with an overlay on mental health. So I think there's incredible opportunity to bring folks together and look at our systems as well as our funding structures.
Thank you, Nikki. Jane Garcia, CEO of La Clinica, will ask the next question, and Nikki, you will go first, and then John.
Thank you both for joining us this morning. We really appreciate that you've had the time to come talk to us. The community health centers serve many immigrants and refugees in Alameda County, as you well know, and we see firsthand the barriers that they often experience accessing essential services. So what steps would you take to ensure that these populations... So what steps would you take to ensure that these populations can access the resources and support they need to be able to thrive? Thank you.
Thank you for that. You know, I certainly want to appreciate the role that all of you play. You know, it's important, not only in terms of the services, the education. And again, we saw during COVID where each of you played critical roles in terms of education as trusted partners, providing testing, providing vaccinations. We've also seen that in terms of public safety. In the council district I represent, Asian Health Services located there. And, you know, we've been able to partner around expanding our view of community safety and having ambassadors and other violence prevention and healing work done. I think we can expand all of that by making sure that your budgets are robust. You know, I mentioned HealthPAC earlier. And knowing that, you know, that's a core part of how the county supports our community health clinics, we have to make sure that you all have the budget in order to do that education and outreach work. And I think we could also play a really important work around workforce development. Having the people who are connected to our community, who are linguistically and culturally connected, is really important. Through my partnerships with healthcare workers, educators, as well as our state superintendent of public instruction, I think I would be well positioned to make sure that you all also have the workforce needs addressed. And that's not only building that workforce pipeline, it's ensuring that your staff earn a living wage, that your staff have homes here in the communities that you serve. And so again, I think there's an important sort of intersectional approach, regional approach to addressing these multiple issues that really starts with addressing health equity and racial equity and ensuring that our community health clinics have the resources and the workforce that you need.
Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you so much for the question, Jane. So there's a number of things we could talk about here. I think the things that I I would highlight are, one, one of the biggest barriers to people who are immigrants receiving care is apprehension about their eligibility and fear of documentation status. So in my work with legal services, a lot of people were reluctant to come forward for assistance that they were entitled to or eligible for because of misunderstandings. And I think we need to have a very proactive and linguistically competent engagement and education program in our communities. So that's something I learned through helping develop and expand the Trauma Recovery Center model is that many people, especially those experiencing anti-Asian hate, don't know that these services exist. They don't know that they're available. They aren't able to access them equitably because there aren't care providers and medical professionals who have translation services available. And so ensuring that there's actually whole-person care for a person means also having services that support them. I also believe in having support services and links to, through co-location and other programs, offering people other services by way of entry through a service that maybe isn't the thing that they came looking for, right? So a lot of the people I've served that had barriers needed other things and they didn't think of themselves as needing access to health services, or they needed health services, but they also needed interventions on housing or documentation status. And I think that co-locating services with other social and community support systems is a really successful way of getting people into care. And I believe that we have to provide adequate funding to ensure people can equitably and meaningfully access care. For the number of people who, the number of people who identify as non-English speaking as their household language in Alameda County, there's a significant decrease in the number of those people who use regular healthcare services or go to our hospitals. So our community wellness clinics are the front line of defense for our ethnic communities and our language, language diverse community. And so I just really think that we have to make investments in that. If healthcare is our priority, we have to show up in the ways that help people access healthcare first.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Nikki. That brings us to the end of our pre-planned questions. We now want to give our audience an opportunity to ask a few questions. Once again, the candidates will each have two minutes to answer each question. The first question, and I will ask, John, you can respond first. Food insecurity is a growing concern, particularly in low-income communities. How would you support policies or programs to address food deserts and improve access to affordable nutritious food for residents?
Thank you very much. So food is, you know, we had a forum last week, I believe, at Alameda County Community Food Bank, and these questions were really important as well. We have just a reality that the health disparities that exist in our community are not just from redlining and environmental justice issues, but also from food disparity and nutritional assistance gaps. And one of the most important places is with women and children. Women and infants, we have major health disparities with maternal health. And those have to be addressed by proactively subsidizing, I believe, food. I believe food is one of the cheapest things we could offer to people through a subsidy program that provides health intervention. Nutritional food is such a preventative investment that keeps people from having lifelong ailments like diabetes, cancer, other types of heart ailments and conditions all come from eating processed and overly processed and saturated foods. And so ensuring that we insert healthy food options into communities is one of the most important ways that we can invest in community health. What we see as challenges during COVID, for example, local community grocers like one in West Oakland that had shown up as a cooperative closed down because competitively, they don't stand first in line when there is a shortage of supply to receive products that community members need. And so we actually have to find ways to locally support that. And I think that there are mechanisms for locally funding food support services. I personally volunteer at Emeryville Citizens Assistance Program monthly, where we serve over 200,000 meals to people who are hungry and homeless in Alameda County. And you see the very common theme. It's linked to poverty. There's many people there who also need language assistance services, who don't speak English. And I think there's an opportunity for us to co-locate nutritional service with other community wellness programs and community healthcare centers, because I think that's how we can identify early people who may be experiencing conditions or ailments that need intervention. We can do preventative care and early intervention care to prevent and reduce the long-term costs for people who develop lifelong ailments related to lack of nutritional assistance.
Thank you, John. Nikki?
Thank you for this question. As one of my heroes, Supervisor Wilma Chan, used to say, food is medicine. And I really appreciate the leadership that she has provided in terms of the county's role around food security. In terms of the work that I've done as an Oakland council member, I think you all know that we have our sugar sweetened beverage tax. And we have worked to make sure that that programming is robust in terms of everything from education around the importance of food nutrition to supporting community-based organizations to actually provide nutritious food as well as filtered water. I've also been making sure that our senior programs, including in the Fruitvale Chinatown and Little Saigon, are funded each year to provide meals to our seniors. I've helped to make sure that the Grand Lake Farmers Market has a long-term lease and also that they accept EBT cards to make fresh organic food accessible, including to those who may not otherwise be able to purchase it from a store. I've worked with small grocers to make sure that they carry fresh fruit and vegetables and working with groups like Oakland Tribe, who's part of Resilient Fruitvale. I've pioneered at the city of Oakland, creating license agreements so that our trusted community-based organizations can conduct programming at our parks and deliver literally tons of food and food that is culturally relevant to our Asian and Latino communities. So I think there's a number of things that the county could potentially do. And a lot of it really boils down to the partnerships with our community health clinics as well as the over 200 community-based organizations that county already partners with. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nikki. Our next question comes from Mia. What are your thoughts? And Nikki, I'll ask you first to respond. What are your thoughts on the importance of integrating mental health, dental, and other services into primary care? What are three concrete ways that you will support our health centers to sustain this comprehensive whole-person care model?
Thank you for that. You know, community health clinics play such a critical role in addressing the health needs of our uninsured, underinsured, most vulnerable, and marginalized communities, including those who are currently homeless and our communities of color. Each of those services is really critical on the prevention side so that we are easing the burden on our emergency response system. In terms of three things I would do, as I said earlier, working with the public health department to ensure that your HealthPAC contracts are robust, to continue to make sure that the resources are available, especially knowing that the state rates have been short-changed, working to support Prop 35. And like I said earlier, it's really important that you all have a robust pipeline into your into your clinics so that you have the capacity, capacity that is linguistically and culturally appropriate. And I think the county can also make sure that we are providing workforce housing. I've talked to a number of a number of you who've told me the challenges you have of not only recruiting and hiring, but retaining people because the cost of housing is so high. So those are some of the few things I would do.
Thank you, Nikki. John?
Thank you. So I think the integration of medical, dental, and eye care, other things into the community wellness model is really important because, again, it whole-person care is how you ensure that we don't leave gaps in the system. I think the first thing that I would do is I would help fulfill the vision that the California Department of Public Health had for its objective when it funded about $300 million to the state and local agencies a couple of years ago to transform the public health system. That included a number of key objectives and goals, which included eliminating racial disparities, ensuring that there was workforce training. That included providing opportunities for emergency preparedness, development, and and other implementations using data and science and community partnerships. I think that those are how you actually help sustain a model. I think that that blueprint is really important. And while most of the dollars, about 200 million of it, was directed to the state for state implementation, I think that the money that went down to the local governments to help implement some of the health improvements are things that could be replicated. So I really do want to see us actually do workforce development, recruitment, and training. Alameda County has a high need for health services, but it has a high vacancy rate as well in the profession. So how are we going to professionally develop and keep people who are local here, who want to be in the healthcare profession, working here? I think that's a big piece of it. I think second is that we need to develop strategies to create diverse funding streams that fund the service system and not leave singular lines of funding tied to the way we model and prepare community wellness clinics to provide services. Because those things are sometimes fickle and subject to both government and voter intervention. And so it puts the health of people at risk when we have too many of our eggs in one basket, so to speak. And then I think locally, it would be community partnerships and leadership. So ensuring that the community is at the table when we have the discussion about how we're going to deliver services, hearing them and listening to them. When I worked overseas, I was a farming instructor for a year in Kenya. And my most important question was asking people, what do they need? So a lot of times, communities are really given things and not asked first what they need. And by learning what communities are missing, we can better identify a way to deliver a service model that is effective, which can help it become self-sustaining in the long term.
Thank you, John. The last question from the audience, and then we'll move to closing statements. And John, I'll ask you to answer first and then Nikki. This question comes from Norma. Santa Rita Jail is one of the deadliest jails in the country. Will you support civilian sheriff oversight to help break down some of the systemic barriers to transparency, accountability, and needed reforms?
Yes. So yes, thank you for the question. I support the full implementation of Assembly Bill 1185 as it was envisioned, which calls for the independent oversight of what we do at the Santa Rita Jail. I support the Board of Supervisors' decision to move forward with Inspector General, and I support counsel for that body. I think that one of the more important things, though, is that at that point, while oversight is really important, and I agree we need it, it's also too late, right? We should be preventing people from being in Santa Rita Jail in the first place. The opportunity for people to experience violence or self-harm should never have occurred in the first place. And there's too many people with serious mental illness who are in need of diversion. And I personally believe that they're reimagining Adult Justice Initiative, Element 12. Of that initiative includes diversion. I worked with Senator Lonny Hancock and other members of the state legislature in 2017 and 18 to implement a pilot program called LEAD, Law Enforcement-Assisted Diversion, wherein people who are experiencing mental health or other crises and have engaged in low-level nonviolent crimes can be diverted away from the criminal legal process and into a system that's health-based. And I believe that we should actually take funding that's available by repurposing settlement dollars from the Babu decision and other healthcare dollars to actually develop subacute bed system outside of the jail system, where healthcare providers can provide competent care to people outside of a carceral setting. I don't believe that's an acceptable platform to receive mental health care. And I believe that many of the deaths and injuries we've experienced at Santa Rita Jail can and would have been prevented if we had intervened upstream in the way we provide healthcare services and provided a health alternative to the public safety system.
Thank you, John. Nikki?
Yes, I absolutely support sheriff oversight. I'm glad that the Board of Supervisors finally took the very first steps towards that. I also support the recommendations of the Reimagining Adult Justice Task Force and see many ways to move that forward in terms of implementation and allocation of resources, which I touched on earlier. Instead of building out the jail, using that $26 million to provide crisis beds in the community. I think there's also an opportunity on the prevention side to pair the work at the city of Oakland and our Department of Violence Prevention, which I have been a champion of and have increased our ability to provide those services, to pair that work with the county's strategy for its newer Department of Violence Prevention. And lastly, I'll just say that I think the difference between myself and the other candidate in this race is that I have a strong track record of working deeply with the community to be a strong champion for community-centered solutions. And so around expanding our public safety system, we went through a year-long process. 85 recommendations came from more than 100 volunteers. We prioritized them as a council to 12. And within a matter of months, I was able to ensure that our crisis response program in the fire department was legislated as well as funded, that our Department of Violence Prevention was also funded. And we implemented, in partnership with OUSD, violence interruption programs in seven of our high schools. And so I do have the experience of, you know, being a leader in terms of championing community-based solutions and would take that approach to the county.
Thank you, Nikki. Thank you, John. We've reached the end of the forum. And at this time, we would like to invite the candidates to provide a two-minute closing statement. Nikki, we'll begin with you, and we'll close out with you then.
Well, thank you so much for having me. This has been a great forum, and I look forward to continuing to work with all of you. As I mentioned, I come from a healthcare family, and I really appreciate the important role that you all play. I've been a community organizer, including working on the social determinants of health in a public health frame to my work. Again, I think one of the important things that differentiates me is my ability to work deeply with the community and to be a leader and a champion for our issues. I'm really excited to be endorsed by healthcare leaders like Sherry Herota and Chris Iglesias, as well as former county public health leaders like Dr. Tony Ayton, Arnold Perkins, Alex Briscoe, and Dr. Art Chen. I think there is an incredible opportunity with this seat, which is a generational opportunity, to ensure that cities that are most impacted by health inequities like Oakland have a real champion to ensure the County Board of Supervisors works with each of our cities and unincorporated areas, that we develop a regional approach and that we work with multiple stakeholders. I look forward to being that champion for all of you as our community healthcare clinics, as well as our most vulnerable residents in Oakland and across the entire county.
Thank you so much for having us today. As I began in my opening, I'm somebody who's been a user of the mental health services system, and I've represented thousands of people as a legal services provider and as a community outreach worker, actually working in communities, actually getting community-based solutions, contrary to what you may have been told, helping people actually access health services and being part of their lives directly, helping them find pathways to housing, healing. I work in victim services where I help remove barriers for people who the worst thing that's ever happened to them in their life doesn't have to be the way their life's trajectory ends. So I'm somebody who's very familiar with the services systems that we're talking about. I've worked with people at the state level and at the county level for years on these solutions. I'm proud to be endorsed by people like the former executive director of the County Welfare Directors Association, Frank Mecca, Trent Rohr, the executive director of the San Francisco City and County Health and Human Services Agency, people who have worked in the child welfare system, who are working to remove barriers to people who are facing challenges getting access to healthcare. Former candidate in this race, Ken Barrick, who is the founder of Seneca Health Services. And I will continue to work with the community as I've done for many years. I understand that housing is a health intervention. I understand that healthcare is what is the most important function of Alameda County. And as somebody who has spent 25 years working in that space and helping people navigate it, I intend to keep doing that. And as somebody who has spent 25 years working in that space and helping people um navigate it, I intend to keep doing that. Uh, regardless of the outcome of this election, but most hopefully um as the future supervisor for District Five. Um, I'm proud to have the sole endorsement and be the only candidate in this race endorsed by Planned Parenthood. Who support reproductive rights, self-to uh self-body determination, healthcare choices for people, as well as Equality California, who's also fought for the healthcare rights of people and access to marginalized communities like the LGBT community who historically have had disproportionate outcomes in healthcare um access um issues in HIV/AIDS and and other services. Um, so I've been working with the community. I'm proud to have the support of those leaders, and I hope to have your support as we move forward to Election Day in just under five weeks. Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you to our candidates for joining us this afternoon and for participating in our forum today and sharing your priorities and vision. I'd like to give special thanks to the staff at the Alameda Health Consortium who helped make this happen. Zara Zady, Jodi Sahoda, and Janay Hawkins, and Tony Pmetta. And thank you, of course, to Robert, Natalie, Cecilia, and Jane for raising topics of importance to our community. The recording of this discussion will be uploaded to the Alameda Health Consortium YouTube channel. Please feel free to share the link with your colleagues and other community members. Before we leave you, we want to remind you of important registration and election dates. We were doing the the countdown clock uh before we started. I think we have a very short amount of time, just a few of less, about a month to go before Election Day. October 21st is the last day to register, October 22nd, same-day registration, and November 5th, Election Day. Again, thank you again to our candidates and for all of you for making time today to join us. We hope you, we have inspired you all to participate in more civic engagement activities. And we hope you have a great afternoon. Thank you so much.
Have a great day. Take care.
Thank you. Bye-bye.